We're going to call the meeting of the City Council for Tuesday, February 13th, to order. And I'd like to note that this meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the open-meeting law. We will first have the flag salute, a moment of silence, so we'll -- Councillor Memhardt, will you lead us in the flag salute?
(Inaudible) United States of America, to serve the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councillor Memhardt, would you like to make mention of, for the moment of silence?
I have one remembrance for a Gloucesterman. Fred Buck passed away Monday morning. His service will be Sunday at the KPN Museum at 11:00. Fred grew up on the fort. Fred was a Gloucester postman. He got to know all the neighborhoods very well. His postman career is commemorated in loco Willie music in the foots of Fred Buck. And in his later years, he worked at the KPN Museum as photo archivist. And his death is a loss for all of us.
And I'd also like to add the names of Bob McKechnie and Don Sudbay. Just to show my age, these gentlemen were of my father's generation and were great citizens of the city and gave a lot back to it. So a moment of silence for all three, please. First order of business, Madam Chairman?
First order of business is oral communications.
Oral communications. This is, "The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda." Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. Residents will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. So with all those caveats, is there anyone who wishes to speak under oral communications tonight? Yes, please come forward and state your name and address.
Right into the microphone, Linda. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I'm Linda Romano from 10 Sunset Hill Road in Gloucester. I've been a resident for seven years, but now I'm full-time. I was part-time. I've been very passionate and excited about this program. I'm a trained social worker, and I care a lot about elders in the community. I wanted to present this program about a senior tax work-off program that allows seniors to volunteer in their community at any capacity in the community so that they may receive a deduction from their taxes and save between $800 or more. And there are multiple opportunities for volunteerism, which helps the elder feel they're participating in their community. So I did drop off some of these to a few of you, and I would like you to spend some time thinking about it, looking at it, and I'm here really tonight to plant the seed, to think about this. It would be a small group of people who would benefit, not the whole community. So that's something that I think is affordable for everyone. Any questions? No? You can also go online to the government websites to look up this program under senior work-off tax deduction. Any questions? No? I thank you for your time, and it was lovely to be here.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else wish to speak under oral communications?
My name is Karen Favazza Spencer. I live at 67 Langsford Street. In 2014, I stood here and testified to the medical harm fluoridation caused me beginning during my second pregnancy, a pregnancy that turned difficult the week fluoridation began. I almost lost my child more than once. It took me almost two years to figure out it was something in the water that was causing the rashes and other illnesses plaguing me and my children. I believed the doctors who said it was just me, that our water was safe. It took me decades to figure out it wasn't just me. I'm one of the 15 percent of the population who is intolerant to even low-dose exposure to fluoridation chemicals, that my irritable bowel syndrome of over 30 years and arthritis of 23 years were misdiagnosed fluoride poisoning. I'm here to speak today for all of us who have been deceived. I'm here to say, "Me too. My life matters." I am one of several residents who emailed you the September 2017 position paper against any fluoride use by the International Academy of Oral Medicine and Toxicology. That paper contains 500 modern scientific references documenting harm. The IAOMT is one of several professional medical, environmental, and human rights groups who openly oppose fluoridation in the 21st century based on scientific evidence, proof positive that there is no consensus on the safety of fluoridation. I also emailed you specific studies proving that in 2014 and 2015, the Director of Public Health and Board of Health with their dental partners stood in these chambers, declared themselves experts, then testified to a number of fabrications that denied science catalogued in the CDC and PubMed databases. There have been additional studies and reports damning fluoridation as damaging to public health in the past two years. Given my experience in the untruth regarding pregnancy, I have brought several copies of a 2017 book titled Pregnancy and Fluoride Do Not Mix. It contains approximately 300 valid modern scientific references specific to the risk to mother and child. As you read this concise book, remember this: According to Massachusetts law, once begun, fluoridation can only be ended through a home rule exemption, and only the City Council has the authority to request a home rule exemption, not the voters and not the Board of Health. Also remember, you were not elected to play doctor. Regardless of what you believe about the disputed claims of dental benefit, fluoridation is harming Gloucester residents who, like me, are intolerant, as well as those with thyroid, kidney, and inflammatory diseases. Then ask yourself, can you really sleep soundly knowing that fluoridation is compromising the health of these vulnerable populations, and you've not used your power to protect them? I have seven copies of the book. I know there's nine of you, a couple of you who will have to share. All right.
Yes, you can leave all that material with the clerk. Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak under oral communications tonight?
My name is Tracy Ritchie. I live at 47 River Road, and I'm also here to talk about fluoridation. Now, as I understand it, fluoride is being added to our public drinking supply to treat tooth decay, which is a medical condition. In European countries, they do not fluoridate because they realize that the public water supply is not the appropriate method to administer treatment for a disease. They do, however, put fluoride in their salt, but they also offer salt that does not contain fluoride, as in toothpaste that has fluoride and toothpaste that does not contain fluoride. The citizens of the European communities have a choice. Thirty percent of Gloucester voters would like to have the option to opt out of this treatment. Regardless of whether you think it is safe and effective, which I believe it is not, adding fluoride to our water supply takes away our right to choose our medical treatment. Fluoridation goes against all of medical ethics. A dentist cannot force a person to use fluoride. They can prescribe it or suggest it, but the patient is not obligated to take it. My dentist, whom I love, knows I don't use fluoride, and when I visit, does not expose me to it because that is my choice. And when we add fluoride to the water, it is literally impossible to avoid being exposed to fluoride. I don't care what the pro-fluoride lobby says is legal. I don't care how many associations endorse it. My right to choose to opt out of this treatment has been taken away. You can ask the Board of Health how many scientific studies these associations have conducted to ensure that fluoride is safe and effective. The answer is zero. They simply will not do the studies. The Board of Health and pro-fluoride lobby just consider anyone who suffers from adverse effects from fluoride exposure as collateral damage. I don't consider them collateral damage, and I hope you don't consider them collateral damage either. Now, look, there's a ton of controversy regarding fluoridation, and you can debate this topic all night long. The bottom line is, this is not a public safety issue. People who want fluoride have access to it. We count on our government to protect us. We count on our government to uphold our rights. I'm standing here in front of you tonight asking you to protect my right to choose because if not you, then who? Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Anyone else under oral communication?
Patty Page, Three-Titel Cove Way. Sodium fluoride is an industrial chemical product imported from foreign countries. These products are seldom tested for safety, nor tested for inclusion of other more harmful chemicals such as barium, cadmium, lead, or mercury. Chemical data sheets describe sodium fluoride, NAF, as an insecticide pesticide used as a stomach poison for plant-feeding insects. That is one use. Fluoride added to public water supplies remains a byproduct in water. Wastewater containing fluoride travels from the point of use through water treatment plants and is expelled directly into the ocean. The fluoride has detrimental effects on aquatic life and ocean ecosystems. Fluoride toxicity in aquatic invertebrates and fishes increases with the increase of fluoride concentration, exposure time, and water temperature. Organizations such as Environmental Working Group, Center for Health, Environment and Justice, and the Sierra Club all recognize fluoridated water as harmful to consumers and the environment. If we are to protect our remaining wild, fresh protein source of fish and all that tasty shellfish caught in the Northwest Atlantic, we must prohibit the practice of adding fluoride to public water supplies. As a designated green city and leader in aquatic environment issues, Gloucester needs to cease this practice of adding fluoride to the water. When referencing the practice of water fluoridation, it is used in context with terms treatment, therapy, and dose. These are medical terms used in the application of medicines, treatment of disease or disorder, and as a quantity of medicine prescribed to be taken at one time. Fluoride is applied as a dental treatment. Public water fluoridation is a medication of the masses while denying consumers the right of consent. Everyone is different. Men different than women. Children different from seniors, and I am different from you. Everyone's tolerance to chemicals varies greatly, some far more sensitive than others. Fluoride has different effects on everyone. Some may tolerate the treatment, some not so well. There are susceptible sub-populations such as pregnant women, children, seniors, and individuals with immune system compromises, to name a few, who should be protected from this exposure. People can be harmed by chemical exposure. Our local example, the 1996 Gloucester High School Field House renovations, I'm sure most of us are familiar with that, which resulted in the chemical injury to staff and students alike. There is no safe consumption of poison or toxins. There is only avoidance. The toxic dangers of chemicals delivered by smoking, secondhand smoke, exposure to asbestos is now widely acknowledged.
So we're past the three minutes now?
This was 2 minutes 47 seconds, sorry. There is no basis to the claim ingesting fluoride is not harmful to everyone. Fluoride's not tested for quality of contaminants nor are people tested for accumulated levels. One sentence. By continuing the practice of public water fluoridation, you foster harm to some of the most vulnerable in our community. Thank you for sticking with me on that.
Anybody else for oral communications?
My name is Damon Cummings. I live at 1063 Washington Street in Gloucester. I'm here for other reasons, obviously. However, I felt it would not be responsible for me to avoid this subject since I have friends who are very sensitive to fluorides. First, I'm not surprised that fluorides are unhealthy for some people. Halogens are very tough elements, and they're always ready to grab an extra electron, and once they're negatively charged, they go grab anything positive. It can be in your body or elsewhere. When I was undergraduate, I wrote my physics thesis on the nuclear magnetic moment of an unstable isotope of bromine, and they made me learn all about halogens and their chemistry for safety reasons at that time. So I've been scared ever since. I also studied in the Netherlands for a while, and they used to fluoridate their water. They stopped fluoridating their water in the mid-1970s, and I have seen no report of mushrooming of tooth decay in the Netherlands. You always hear that kids didn't get cavities anymore after we added fluoride. Well, correlation is not a proof of cause. Other things can cause the tooth decay rates to go down, such as better dental hygiene and better diet and better dental care. Anyway, I'm very concerned about this issue now that it's come up, and I don't think Gloucester should be medicating everyone with a potentially dangerous chemical that we know that some people are harmed by when we're not entirely sure what the good side is. Thank you.
Thank you, Damon. Anyone else for oral communication? Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Okay, we have the consent agenda before us. Any councillors wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? No? I'm good. Yes, Jamie. Councillor O'Hara?
I'd just like to remove the management reappointments for a comment, please.
All of them?
I'd just like to make a general comment.
Okay. And I'm going to remove for a general comment under Communications the City Council letter of support for Harbor Village, as well as the five responses from the mayor's office to oral communications from January 23rd. So with those off, do we first?
I move to...
Second.
To second.
Move and seconded. Calls in favor, say aye. Aye. Councillor O'Hara?
Thank you. I just want to take the time. There's no better time with the number of the managers in front of us. How important is this? This is just a friendly reminder. I consider myself a servant of the people, the citizens, taxpayers, voters of Gloucester. I'm sure you consider yourself the same. In fact, some police departments put on the side of their cruises, protect and serve. I just want, again, a friendly reminder, if you could pass on to your employees that should a constituent call you, make a call, send an email, please be kind enough to return that call. I've gotten a number of constituents call me over my past term and present term of not getting returned phone calls on numerous attempts, and I consider that very rude and unacceptable. So if you could please pass that on, I would greatly appreciate it. I thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. I just wanted to make a quick comment on the communications. First, City Council letter of support for the affordable housing project at Harbor Village, the Cameron's Project. You'll find in your packet a draft of a letter to the state from the City Council endorsing this project, which we will vote on at our next meeting. So I ask that you all please read the letter so when we have a chance to vote on it next time, we can. Second thing is the two through five through six are the responses from the mayor's office to the constituents who appeared before us at our last meeting when we discussed the damage to automobiles in the high school parking lot during the January 4th storm. It's a two-page memo from Mr. Distino to each of the individuals. I commend it to your reading. It details the technicalities and legalities of the situation, and that really is the response of the administration to the people who appeared before. So again, I would recommend to councillors to please read those responses to see if there's anything further that you wish to do. Councillor Cox?
I don't see the letter in the packet, so if you could have Joanne email that to all of us. The only thing that it has in there is the letter of support from the mayor's office and the award, but under that bookmark, there is no draft of a letter.
For the Harbor Village?
Correct.
Yeah, it's there, and I'll make sure that it's sent separately.
Okay. It's not in our packet.
It's not easily findable. You're right. Okay, we'll do that. This letter here, Joanne. Okay. So with those two items, do we need another vote to just include them in the consent agenda? So with having said those things, motion as the... So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item of business?
Next item of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of February 8th.
Councillor Cox?
Thank you. We only have three items. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council accept under MGL Chapter 44, Section 53A, a fiscal 2018 school-based student awareness of fire education SAFE grant from the Mass Department of Fire Services in the amount of $4,308 for the purpose of providing fire and life safety education to school-aged children, and I so move.
And I second.
So basically, this is an annual grant that we apply for that will, through the efforts of fire captain Dominic Barbagallo, who not only writes the grants but executes the educational programs for the school. There's no match for either grant.
So it's an acceptance of a grant, just requires a simple majority vote? Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next one?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a fiscal year 2018 Senior Awareness of Fire Education SAFE grant from the Mass Department of Fire Services in the amount of $2,615 for the purpose of providing fire and life safety education to seniors, and I so move.
Second.
So same grant, different demographic, different amount. Yay.
Yay. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve 2018 SA 16 in the amount of $15,000 from Waterways Enterprise Fund Undesignated Fund Balance Retained Earnings Free Cash Account, as noted, to Waterways Enterprise Capital Outlay Vehicles Account, as noted, for the purpose of purchasing a 2018 Chevy Silverado 2500 truck, including lights and lettering and installation of same for use by the Harbor Masters Office, and I so move.
Second.
So currently, the Harbor Masters Department only has one vehicle, and the deputy Harbor Master is using his own vehicle to respond to situations as well as for work purposes in transporting other department employees, which is inherently a liability issue. The new vehicle, a Chevy Silverado, is, the appropriation that we're doing this evening is $15,000, and it's the first-year lease-to-own payment, which comes from the Waterways Enterprise Fund Retained Earnings or Free Cash Account. Moving forward, the second and third payments for the new truck will be within the enterprise fund budgeted in the FY '19 and '20 budget. The Harbor Master assured the Budget and Finance Committee that this new vehicle will be used by him as he is on call 24/7.
Thank you, councillor. Any questions or comments from other councillors? This is supplemental appropriation. We have a roll call vote. Oh, sorry, Steve. Councillor Blank?
Thank you. So as the Waterways representative, we had this discussion last week at the Waterways Board, and this is necessary. We're trying to improve our outreach to the community, and with this vehicle, it will allow the Harbor Master and the Harbor Masters staff to be able to do what they do, especially in the wintertime when they're not on the water. And also, just a quick note, because there's going to be a couple more supplemental appropriations tonight, and... Oh, sorry. I support this completely tonight, and the Waterways Board did also.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councillor Memhardt?
Yes.
Councillor Nolan?
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
Councillor Heck?
Yes.
Councillor Holgren?
Yes.
Councillor Blank?
Yes.
Councillor Lombard?
Yes.
The motion, City Council motion for 2018 SA 16 for $15,000 to the account specified for the first year of three-year lease-to-own program to purchase a new 2018 Chevrolet Silverado 250 truck for the Harbor Masters Department passes on a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other items from Budget and Finance? Nope. Okay. Next item of business.
Next item of business is the Ordnance and Administration Standing Committee Report of February 5th.
Councillor Blank?
We have one, actually, we have two items. So the first item is, "Ordnance and Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council support the mayor's recommendation to award the City of Gloucester Mariners Medal to Kristen Dagley, and I so move."
Second.
So Mr. Dagley had jumped into the frigid waters last year and helped a family to shore with their boat capsizing at the mouth of the Anisquam River. We have talked about this several times with the Harbor Masters Department and amongst ourselves, and if it wasn't for Mr. Dagley acting swiftly on this, it wouldn't have been a rescue situation. It would have been a retrieval situation. So we really appreciate Mr. Dagley stepping up and doing what hopefully most people will do. I know it's a tough decision, and it's a moment's decision, but I just want to congratulate him, and he did a great job. So this will also be at a council meeting further down the road, that this acceptance will, the presentation.
Does this say roll call, or this is a simple majority? So it's moved and seconded. All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Councillor Blank?
Next item, we have, "Ordnance and Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council withdraw Council Order 2017-055, Councillor Orlando and Councillor Nolan, to amend Gloucester Code of Ordnance, Chapter 9, Trash and Recycling and Litter in reference to Closed Top Recycling Receptacles Without Prejudice, and I so move."
Second. Moved and seconded for withdrawal.
So at our conversation with the administration at... So at our conversation with the administration at Ordnance and Administration, it was brought to our attention that it would cost just over a half a million dollars to try to get these closed-bin receptacles for recycling, and with our narrow roads and the way they're set up, it would almost be impossible for an automated trash system to come in and pick these up, and also, it wouldn't be enforceable to make people come to the Department of Public Works and purchase these, or, you know, it's unfeasible for the city to do this. So that's what we came to at ONA.
Thank you. So a simple majority for the withdrawal. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
The next order of business is the Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of a special meeting January 9th, January 29th in February... in January 29, 2018.
Counselor Gilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. On a motion by Counselor Lombard, seconded by Counselor Holgren, the Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council refer the matter of the affordable housing hardship claim made by the Fuller Mixed Use Ventures LLC under GZO Section 5118 to the administration of Mayor Taken for the purpose of renegotiation for that part of the application submitted that addresses GZO Section 511, and I so move.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Just a quick procedural note. So this matter, which involves the Fuller Mixed Use Ventures, is still before planning and development, and this was... and it remains there, so, counselor, and will remain there until we vote a recommendation out. So Counselor Gilman, do you want to say anything else?
I just wanted to acknowledge that Peter Godot is here, the Director of Product Development from Windowover Construction, representing Fuller Mixed Use, and also Attorney Deb Eliason, who's the attorney for Fuller Mixed Use, and I just thank them for being here tonight. So I think the minutes are very clear. There were seven of nine of the councilors that attended that meeting, which was really a standing committee meeting, so I think we understand the content, and so I hope that you approve this recommendation.
Yes, excuse me. So I think, again, this is just a simple vote, and what this will do is we'll pause our city council process pending further negotiation, and then they'll return to Planning and Development, and then to the council. Counselor Cox?
Is this also the public hearing that's scheduled for this evening that is continued?
Yes.
So how long are we going to keep this on the agenda as a public hearing? I'm just curious, because I don't want people to get confused. Can we remove it off the public hearing list until it's ready to move forward? So that way, there's no confusion with the general public with seeing it on there and not seeing the "to be continued"? We've already advertised for it, I'm sure, but...
Right, but I think we do need to open the public hearing tonight, and we'll continue it, and I think that if, when we notice our next meetings, if there's going to be further action or another continuance, we'll note that in the notice.
So the whole purpose of getting it referred back is to make a change in it?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So then, we're going to have to re-advertise for a public hearing, so I don't see what the point is of continuing a public hearing that's going to change.
Well, the point of returning it was to see if they would come back with a change. We don't know that yet.
Okay, so at some point, if it comes back with a change, we should close and...
Yes, we will do that.
Remove it from the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Counsel Gilman?
I just wanted to add also that the applicant requested a 30-day extension, so it was at their desire to hold off and bringing it forward to the planning board the other night, so just wanted to make sure that our council was aware of that. Thanks.
Yes.
So therefore, the "to be continued" to 227 is inaccurate as well? Because, I mean, that's definitely not within the 30 days. It's the next city council meeting, so... Okay, all right. I just, it just seems like it would be better for us to...
Yes.
Close it and...
We'll try and be as clear as we can with this. This is very complicated. Thank you for raising that. Okay, so on Counselor Gilman's motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is the scheduled public hearing, Special 2017-059, Special City Council Permit 2017-012, Schoolhouse Road Number 2, Number 3, Number 4, MAP 262, Lots 14 and 37, and Gloucester Crossing Road Number 7, MAP 43, Lots 4 and 5, for a special permit under the Mixed Use Overlay District pursuant to Gloucester Zoning Ordinance Section 5.29, including major project, Gloucester Zoning Ordinance Section 5.7 and Section 5.2910 and Section 5.118.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With noting Counselor Cox's comments, which were very well put, we will open the public hearing and continue until February 27th. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2018-003, to amend the Gloucester Zoning Ordinance by adding a footnote "aye" to Section 3.2.1, insert it into the CB column and add in the same footnote as footnote "H" in the CB column for Section 3.2.2 regarding affordable housing.
And we will open this public hearing and also continue it until February 27th. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Public Hearing 2018-005, Loan Order Number 2018-001, for a loan order in the amount of $3,700,000 to fund the Lanes Cove Breakwater Rehabilitation Project.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing and ask if there is someone to speak in favor of this motion?
Good evening, councilors. Mike Hale, Public Works Director. I waited a long time to sit at this podium, stand at this podium for this loan order. Just a little history, Lanes Cove seawalls has been through many storms, made it through some, not others. The recent damage first occurred on a wind in nor'easter in 2010. The damage was not eligible for any state or federal funding, although we did apply. The subsequent damage came on a blizzard in February 2013, and that damage was deemed eligible, and at first FEMA awarded the full $3.4, $3.5 million, and they recalculated and brought it down to zero. The city went through a number of appeals, and it was only a matter of last summer, which we were awarded $1.3 million through FEMA. Caveat is it has to be spent by this December. Over the course of the fall and the summer, we applied to the Commonwealth Dam Seawall Fund, which we received a million-dollar grant for, so we have 2.3 in grant funding for the wall. Estimated project cost is 3.7. The loan order covers everything, just in case there's any incidentals. It also covers the fact we have, you know, it covers the loans. It's a seven-month project. It's going to be advertised next week, pre-bid's mid-March, construction April through seven months. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Before we get to questions, are there any... is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this project? Yes. Come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Paul Hadley. I'm from Four Old Farm Lane, Lanesville. I'm also a member of the Lanes Cove Historical Society. I want to thank you all for your hard work, the city, and providing me the opportunity to support this project. I know that I work with, for the state, so I understand how funding goes, and I know it's sometimes it's hard to get that funding in place. I think there's a unique opportunity for us now to capitalize on that. You know, the wall's not going to grow back, and it's kind of an eyesore. We're doing a lot of work in the cove to try to upgrade the shack, and now we're working on the little shack over there. So I just wanted to say I support the funding, and I appreciate everyone's hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor?
My name is Damon Cummings. I live at 1063 Washington Street. This is my third Lanes Cove breakwater repair. It sure looks like it's going to be more permanent this time, and I congratulate the city for really taking this seriously this time. I know that demands on capital expenditures in the city are huge, and I can't thank you enough for seeing to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Frank Wright, 12 Rear, Sunset Point Road. A lot of people out here in favor of this. We don't want to take a lot of your time, but I think we would be remiss if we didn't thank Mike Hale a whole lot. He's been working on this thing for the better part of four years now, and he's finally put it into a, the city into a position where it can take advantage of a great deal of federal and state funds, and I urge you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? I know that we do have... Come forward.
My name's Ken Doughty. I'm from 10 Sunset Point Road, and I have mooring down in the harbor, and my boat sank twice in the last two years, basically because the swells of coming into the harbor have been noticeably worse since the wall has come down. I spend a lot of time down there in the cove, and there are a lot of people that come and visit down there to take advantage of the beauty of the cove, and it's dangerous for people to walk out on that wall in the current condition that it's in, and from a liability standpoint, it's... something really needs to be done, because somebody's going to get hurt out there if it's, if we don't get it at least back to where it was prior to the storms. Speaking for a lot of the local fishermen and all that work out of there, it's a working port still. There's a lot of lobstermen that are still making their living out of there, and, you know, my father was an executive with the peer company that originally owned that property before it turned over to the city, and, you know, they... that wall was, has meant a lot to my family and to the people that lived down in the cove area there, and it's a beautiful place, and it's kind of in rubble right now, and we'd really appreciate it if you folks would help us out with trying to get it straightened out, because it's a landmark I don't think that we should ignore. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, come forward. State your name and address, please.
My name is Mary Ellen Lepianca. I live at 17 Hammond Street. I just wanted to point out that Lanes Cove is a significant cultural resource for the city of Gloucester, and it has been declared to be eligible for status to be added to the National Register of Historic Places. Restoring the seawalls there and protecting the historic shed that has been restored by the community there would preserve a historically significant property for the city of Gloucester as an asset to the citizens and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Is there anyone who wished just to indicate support for this project by just raising your hand? Oh, well, that's a good showing. Dana, you give a quick count?
One hand.
Those hands count as much as speaking does, so thank you. Okay, if there's no one else to speak in favor, do we have anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, do we have any communications, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we received one communication in support of this loan order for this project from Craig Curvo of 19 Norman Avenue, and I believe I distributed that email to all the councilors.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, any questions from councilors about the specifics and the technicalities of this proposal? In that case, I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Counselor Cox?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council authorize the following loan order. That the city of Gloucester appropriates $3,700,000 to pay costs of the Lanes Cove Breakwater Rehabilitation Project, including costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44 or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The mayor and other appropriate officials of the city are authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay costs of the project. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of the costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Further ordered, that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the general laws any or all of the bonds authorized by this order, and to provide such information and execute documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes, and I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Do you want to have a narrative, or...
Sure.
Go ahead.
Due to the extraordinary efforts of city departments and the administration, particularly the fire, harbor master, DPW, and police departments, the city is in receipt of $1.3 million from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, and just received $1 million from the State Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the repair project. The caveat is the grant, the FEMA grant must be spent down by December 30th, 2018, because the event occurred in 2013. The DPW director informed the Budget and Finance Committee that he anticipates while the bid to complete, while the bid to complete schedule may appear aggressive, he believes the Lanes Cove seawall will be completed by December 31st. The CFO advised the city, advised that the city will go out for a short-term loan of $3.7 million, and after the grant funds are applied, the city will then go out for a long-term debt anticipation to be about $1.4 million, all told. And I also want to thank everybody that showed up tonight to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. So other councilors, council discussion? Counselor Gilman?
So I obviously will be voting in favor of this, and I just wanted to say a couple of things. It goes without saying that Mike Hale did an amazing job on this, so I echo what Mr. Wright said. One of the things that Mike did was, in the storm of 2013, he had the foresight to take photos of the wall before and after the storm, and that in itself was very important to us getting that $1.3 million grant. So I think that, you know, he's played a major role, and I truly appreciate it. He also, about a year ago, had the consultant come and speak to all the folks at Lanesville Community Center, and they did an amazing job going through all the technical details and answered lots of questions to both commercial fishermen and people that had moorings in the cove and people that were butters, so that was also very helpful. So, you know, I do attend about two-thirds of the meetings at the Lanes Cove Historical Association, and we've been working really hard to restore the fish shack and then currently the little shack, and there's a lot of pride in the village and in Lanesville, so I'm really excited about this, and I do hope that the rest of the councilors vote in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Gilman. Councilor Holgren?
I'm going to be very happy to vote in support of this measure this evening. I am glad to be coming in on the tail end of a very long and protracted effort, especially on the part of Mike Hale. Thank you very much, and those of us with family history in Lanesville especially, thank you. And to the Lanesville Historical Association and all those who came tonight, thank you very much as well.
Others? Councilor Nolan?
I too will be supporting this tonight. I think it's important for everybody in the city to understand that grants are very hard to come by, and it's a lot of work with the administration, a lot of volunteers, and effort has to go into this. And when an opportunity comes up to get money in a grant form, it's important that we move quick to move on it, to fund the additional amounts of money. It's definitely a large part of the history of Lanesville, and I'm very happy for all the hard work for everybody, and I'm glad to see this happen.
Thank you, Councilor Nolan. Councilor O'Hara?
Thank you. I too will be supporting this tonight. It's a very valuable asset to the entire city. Obviously, Lanesville, which is a planet among itself, it's a part of the city, and we all enjoy Lanes Cove, and I want to thank Mike Hale. He's done a tremendous job at Budget and Finance. He's discussed the schedule. It's an aggressive schedule that he feels can be met, that is mandatory for us to utilize the free money that's out there. That free money is our money. It just comes via a different pocket. So, thank you, Mike, and we all look forward to seeing the finished product. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? And I also would just like to echo the thank yous, and thank you for the residents who showed up tonight to either speak or raise your hand. It really helps us in our deliberations when we see that we have that kind of public support, and this is truly a project that deserves that. So, with that, Madam Clerk, I believe this is a roll call.
Councilor Maumhard?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Heck?
Yes.
Councilor Holgren?
Yes.
Councilor Blank?
Yes.
Councilor Lombard?
Yes.
City Council, the motion -- City Council motion for the loan order 2018-001 in the amount of $3,700,000 to fund the Lanes Cove breakwater rehabilitation project passes on a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the next order of business.
The next order is Public Hearing 2018-006 to amend Gloucester Code of Orders, Chapter 22 Traffic in Motor Vehicles, Section 22267, One-Way Streets Generally, and Section 22145, Stopping Standing and Parking Regarding Concord Street During Certain Hours on Certain Days.
This is a public hearing. I open the public hearing and ask for those speaking in Welcome, Dr. Sapphire. Appreciate you being here, and also welcome to Chairman Pope and West Parish Principal Talina Immels here. Go ahead.
Great, thank you very much, and good evening, members of the council. What we're seeking to do is alleviate the traffic congestion, the chronic traffic congestion that has been occurring at West Parish in the afternoon at dismissal. There's been no problems in the morning, but we do have heavy congestion in the afternoon. Our sense is that it's caused by three factors. The first is the number of cars that are coming to pick up children in the afternoon. The second has to do with park and pickup, that there are a number of cars that, instead of going into the live queue, remaining in their car and picking up their children in a processional fashion, actually are parking their cars in the area, walking over to the school and picking up their children, bringing them back, thus causing more congestion. And the third piece has to do with traffic flow, because you've got cars coming in off of Essex Avenue, coming up from Concord Street, coming into West Parish, and of course, going out from West Parish as well. So, the potential for a bit of a mess is quite real. Some of the action steps that we've taken is to first to identify the current bus ridership based upon the applications that are submitted to our Director of Transportation at the beginning of the year. We then placed phone calls to approximately 50 West Parish families who live beyond the two-mile limit and are eligible to take the bus for free. And we have made a bit of a dent. Approximately 10 to 15 of those families now have their children taking the bus. There are a handful, not many, maybe about a dozen and a half families, that have walkers where there are no sidewalks, and that is a safety issue, number one. That safety issue as well is described and discussed in the school committee policy. So, we have offered some -- we've offered free bus service to them as well, even though they're closer to the school and not beyond the two-mile limit. The second issue, as I mentioned, has to do with the park and the pickup. People are parking their cars and then going to get their children. We have been sending out a number of notices, trying to build a culture which says, yes, come pick up your children, but please, if we can make the live queue more efficient, then please stay in that particular line, be a part of that flow, and then we can facilitate the dismissal of the children. The third piece, which is why we're here tonight, is to ask for a one-way directional between the entrance, exit to West Parish, up, I believe it's west, toward Essex Avenue. It's approximately 300 feet from the school entrance, but this will certainly -- the one-way going up toward Essex Avenue will certainly alleviate a lot of the congestion. Instead of having cars coming up from the firehouse toward West Parish and having cars coming in from Essex Avenue, cars going into West Parish and coming out of West Parish, we feel that, at least on a trial basis through the school year, having that one-way directional is going to help to reduce some of that congestion and not impede any of the egress of cars or buses leaving West Parish.
Thank you, Dr. Sapphire. Is there anyone else to speak in favor?
Good evening. The -- what we're trying to do here is make a safer situation at the school. What we've observed was people crossing, parking on Essex Avenue and crossing Essex Avenue, crossing and parking on both sides of Concord Street, and cross -- trying to cross while the traffic was leaving the school as well as the buses. So, what we're asking for here is for this to be one-way for just one-half hour, for 15 minutes before school is released until 15 minutes after, and we've observed that by that time, 15 minutes after 3 o'clock, pretty much all the traffic has cleared out. The queue has gone through. We've had meetings with -- public meetings at the school. Many of the neighbors came and weighed in. I don't believe any of them opposed this. It was their suggestion that we make it one-way only from the entrance to the school up to Essex Avenue, although -- so, if as you're leaving the school, you can go either way with your kid, but it's just that people won't be coming in and trying to turn into the school, which we noticed is to be the major problem, along with the parking and the walkers. So, thank you. Please support this.
Yes, to speak in favor still. Thank you. Come forward and state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Deb Telip. I'm at 22 Addison. Telip, T-E-L-E-P. I am a school choice, West Parish parent, and being a school choice, we weren't entitled to busing at first, and so I have a lot of experience with pickup and trying to arrange to pick up my children there. And I have, you know, concerns with the safety and that aspect of it after school. One thing that I just -- I really want to have a kind of a big-picture idea of West Parish being a hub of the community and a welcoming place, and I want to make sure that we, you know, that we agree with the neighbors, but I also want to make sure that our children can feel welcome to play on the playground after school, that I can pick up my children, park somewhere, and occasionally have a community at the school. Right now, it doesn't feel very welcoming to be able to park there and figure out how to do that. So, that's just a concern that I have in addition to the safety, and I'm not sure what the best solution is. I think maybe the one-way would help alleviate that, but I just wanted to say that I want the school to be welcoming and to be able to be that way for the community and the parents. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this motion? Come forward. State your name and address, please.
Councilmembers? Kevin Philbrook, 8 Traverse Street. I am in opposition of this. I think it's a Band-Aid to a broken leg. I'm sure we all know the analogy. It's not going to alleviate anything, I don't feel. I think it's just going to push the problem all to the left instead of equally from left and right, so I think it's going to create budget issues to block the road off. We're going to need someone to do that. That's going to cost money. So, I don't really feel like it's fixing anything. I would rather decline this, and I'm not sure the powers-to-be to make decisions on what gets done for the next step, but I come up with a better solution. This isn't -- this won't help. This will just delay a problem that is pretty serious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? Yes, please come forward and name an address, please.
Dawn Alves. My address is New Way Lane. I'm actually on Essex Ave. And I grew up -- okay. I grew up at the top of Concord Street, the White House right on the top, on the left-hand side or on the right-hand side going down. My mom was a crossing guard there, who almost was killed doing duty because of Essex Ave being a main highway or a highway that can go 40 miles an hour. So, when she would stand in the middle of Essex Ave to hold the traffic on that corner to let the buses come up and come around, oftentimes the traffic coming from 128 to Condonland Road to go towards Magnolia, the speed is as of an excess of 40 to 45 miles an hour. Since West Parish has been redone, at the beginning of the year or on big drop-off days, cars park on both sides of Essex Ave. They park on the right-hand side, and they park on the left-hand side, and so it's a danger. That's my first concern from somebody in the neighborhood. My second concern is what I don't understand when they designed that school. I do not understand why they made these beautiful sidewalks on both sides alleviating an opportunity for parking from the bottom of the driveway to the corner going towards the fire station. There's no sidewalk on that right-hand side, so everybody that parks to get out to walk their child puts their child in themselves in danger, especially in the winter months. If I am coming home, or if I'm coming back, or any of us who live in West Gloucester in the summer traffic, we don't go to Toingasheak Beach when the traffic is backed up. We just don't. Is that the way it's going to be on Concord Street? Do I have to wait in the queue line if I'm going up Concord Street if I don't know that it's a half a day? If it's one-way and all the parents are lined up, do I have to wait in that queue line for parents to get into the school to get out? Or if it's one-way, can I go around on the second lane? Because right now, as a two-way street, it has two lanes, one coming and one going. If it becomes one-way, does that give everyone an access for two lanes going one-way? I'm just wondering. I think the gardening is beautiful, but they took down those three big willow trees that were there forever, and they planted new trees on the corner where you can't even create a parking area. The whole design was not well-done in terms of parking. I just think that we endanger a lot of families by that, and I don't know what you're going to do going forward with graduations and all those events that they have. It's not community welcoming right now. How can a neighborhood school welcome its community if no one can park there? At the most, you can maybe have 50 cars, and the staff alone takes that. So, how can you have staff and families come to an event at an evening without causing a traffic hazard? I don't think one-way is the solution. I honestly don't. I know that it's not right to use the cemetery as a pickup on a regular basis, but you could take the opportunity to teach people respect for a cemetery and allow for a queue line to go down, drop off, and pick up. If you're familiar with Beechbrook Cemetery, it's an easy loop, and it's a teachable moment to respect the cemetery. I don't know if you've considered jogging your drop-off. I used to be a school bus driver as well, and I drove into West Parish with the school buses. You should go there when the school buses are backing into that small parking lot. It's not easy for those drivers. There are accidents waiting to happen. But maybe you could consider doing a different time drop-off for parents and for the arrival of buses, always having to take into consideration the school bus schedules, but parents who choose not to send their children on a school bus have to then choose to either arrive later at school or earlier. I just think that there are other options available, and I don't know that you've thought of them all because I've not seen them. Another concern I have is just as a citizen and as an abutting neighbor, I don't understand why was I not notified through the mail about this meeting? I do not have children at West Parish anymore, and somebody sent it to me that it was posted on Facebook. Isn't that a legal consideration for all the neighborhood? Why was it not in my mailbox? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking. Appreciate that. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Do we have any communications? Name and address, please.
My name is Jane Sweet, and I live at 14 Concord Street, which is right at the base of West Parish. So, I just want to know that Mr. Pope said that they were in the process of hiring a crossing guard, so I don't see that posted on the website or a body on duty, for that matter, and so I was just wondering about that, why isn't there a crossing guard up there? And my solution is either the cemetery, which was my first, and my second was a drop-off almost like the airport at the base of West Parish. There's a sidewalk all the way up to West Parish, so why couldn't they just drop their child there with, you know, somebody standing there, whether it be a police officer or somebody from the school or a PT whether it be a police officer or somebody from the school or a PTO, to send the kids up the sidewalk to the school? So that's my suggestion.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. Anyone else in opposition? Name and address, please, for the record.
Wendy Rose, 369 Essex Ave. And it still appears that there's still live parking on 127, which is a highway, and people are also still parking in private property and along Essex Ave, which is Route 127?
133.
133, sorry, yeah. So the principal informed parents to use Q to not park on Essex Ave or Concord Street. They're still doing it. The parents are not only still parking there, they're leaving their cars running while they're going to pick up their kids. Students are not allowed to cross the traffic. They're still crossing 133 with their parents. I live on the corner of Concord Street in Essex Ave, and I witness this every day. It's astonishing, and I'm just very concerned that somebody is going to be hurt. Like my older sister said, you know, my mom was crossing guard there for years, and it's a very dangerous corner. So my biggest concern is safety for the children, the parents, and the neighborhood. Mr. Pope says they're trying to stop parents from street parking. How? There are no tickets being put on cars. If the parents are being told that they can't park there, they're not listening. They're still parking along 133, Concord Street, in private parking areas. So what I want to know is what's being done? And I don't understand why you're not answering any of the questions or concerns. So...
Well, we're not taking questions right now. This is statements in favor or in opposition of, and if you are in opposition of it, thank you very much.
I'm in opposition because if I'm coming down Concord Street up to Essex Ave and I'm trying to get to my house and their parents coming in and out of their cars to West Parish, I'm concerned that a child or a parent is going to be hit because there's no sidewalk there for them to leave their vehicle and go onto a sidewalk from my sister's neighbor's house from that corner. There's no sidewalk. You know, Shaun's done a great job trying to get that taken care of, but it's still undone. So I'm in opposition, and I think that we need to seriously look at, like the other gentleman said, this is just a Band-Aid. And of course, we all want a solution, and we're all aware that we're all trying. But we were also all aware before the school was built, and nothing was done about it. So this is tricky. But my biggest concern with my entire family is public safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in opposition? State your name and address for the record, please.
Judy Rose, 17 Landing Road. I have a few things. I wasn't aware that it's not a question-and-answer thing. I too have the question as to why, as in a butter of Concord Street, and I live directly across West Parish School, why I wasn't notified of the meeting. I mean, it sounds to me like this is a variance or a change of a street, and I would think that the city would notify people and let them know. I don't go on Facebook, but a friend did send me this notice, and, you know, I think looking around, having very few people here, that it's concerning that people don't know about the meeting, and this could affect a lot of people. So, you know, I just, I guess, what do I do? Address that to the mayor as to why, you know, we're not notified? Because I know that there was a notice when the meeting was at West Parish School, although I did not get a notice because my councilman gave it, my notice, and all of the people on my street gave our notices to a friend of his who also lives on the street, but she chose not to deliver them to all of us. And I actually wrote a letter to the mayor, the chief of police, the superintendent of schools, my ward counselor, the principal of the school as to why it is that I wasn't notified, and not one person responded to my letter, which was sent via email, and I don't understand that. I mean, I pay a lot of taxes to live in this town, and I feel like, you know, if there's a public notice that goes out, it should be delivered in my mailbox just like everybody else, not handed to, you know, a friend who decides whether or not she wants to deliver it. So that's, it's disturbing to me, and also the fact that I write to all of these officials and not one person responds to me. The other thing is, living on Landing Road, people were parking all along my road on both sides of it. It is a private road, and with cars on both sides of Landing Road, we could not get a fire truck or an ambulance down our street. And I tried very kindly to speak to people and say, you know, this is a problem for us because not only can we not get emergency vehicles down here, but the road is a mess, and I have reached out to the city DPW and asked them if they would put some road base on it or something because it's full of potholes and it's just, it's a mess, and I'm afraid somebody's going to get hurt, and we're going to get sued because we own the road. So that's the reason why I don't want people parking there. I put up no parking signs. People still park there. So, you know, it's a concern. But the other thing is, I don't have any kids at West Parish School, but I do care about the safety of people. I don't want somebody to get hurt on my street. I don't want somebody to get run over in the street, and that's why I'm here. And I know that in the January 2nd meeting that you guys had, the superintendent had said that he waived the bus fees to a two-mile radius for kids of West Parish School, but only 2% of those students actually rode the bus. And so I'm just wondering, well, I know this is a rhetorical question because you can't answer, what kind of effect did that have on the budget or the taxpayers? What is the cost for West Parish kids to all be able to have a free bus ride? I mean, I realize it's only, I think it's like a hundred dollars for your kids to be put on the bus, but maybe that's, you know, a hardship on some people. And these buses are going by anyway, all of these homes. Why can't we have a free bus? I don't know how many kids ride these buses, but they look to me when I see them driving that they are empty. So I'm, my suggestion is that if it's not a full bus, use vans. If it is a full bus, or it could be a full bus, let's make it free. That certainly has got to take up the cost of having police at both ends, you know, twice a day and on days that they have events. And again, I think that the cemetery, you know, I looked it up, and it says you can only be in a cemetery if you're visiting a gravesite or if there's a funeral, but we don't want to add more people to the gravesites because of accidents, and I think that the city should look at...
So let me just stop you right there. I mean, these are all great suggestions to solve the problem that was described by Dr. Sapphire when he spoke about why we're having this particular ordinance, and so that's what we are considering tonight, whether to pass this ordinance or not. All of the other issues that you raise are all relevant issues and should be raised with the school about other ways to deal with this. Right now, we're just going to be dealing with the one-way between the driveway to the school and Essex Avenue.
Okay.
And all of what you've said and the others have said is of great relevance, and it's in the record, but that's not part of what we can consider tonight. There's, but certainly not that we're just going to ignore that. As far as the notice goes, this has come up a couple of times. This meeting was properly noticed in accordance with our zoning, I mean, excuse me, our code of ordinances. It was published in newspapers and so forth, and maybe our way of notification is becoming a little arcane because of the, you know, technology, but we did it in accordance with all the rules, so we're properly noticed.
Why was the notice sent out for the meeting at West Parish, then?
That was a ward meeting that Councilor Nolan held, and counselors can do whatever they want, but in terms of a public hearing at city council, we have our rules that we follow, and they were all followed here. I can assure you of that, so...
Well, I understand what this meeting was for, but I took this opportunity to address these other issues because I feel like when I reach out to the officials that I mentioned before and nobody responds to me, I'm going to take an opportunity to come and speak my piece anyway. So I am definitely opposed to it.
You're opposed to us with this one-way street. That's what you're saying.
Well, I am for two reasons. One, it says it's a temporary fix. It doesn't say what that temporary window is. So is that a month, a year, a week, what?
We'll get to that. We will.
Okay. Yes, I'm opposed to it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you speaking to us. Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Patty Ammaral. I have witnessed what's gone on there. I was actually a PTO president at Veterans Memorial School. I watched Jacob Kipas. He almost got killed by a car. It's a very frightful thing to see that happen. So I would suggest that somebody really does something that's going to change this. We can all sit here and talk about it, right? But let's really do something that's going to do something. Let's not wait for some child to get killed. Because really, have you been on Essex Ave? We clean the litter up there. You take your life on your hands there. There's certain roads in this street, in this city, that's how it is, you know? Thatcher Road, every time I clean that, I take my life on my hands. Let's do something that's going to, and be permanent, and let's not do it for a month, two months. Let's do this so it's safe for these kids. Because even Veterans isn't still safe. I'm sure it's still unsafe there because it's just too much of a cluster, you know? So let's do something that's going to be permanent, safe for all these children in our city. Okay? Let's do it. We can do it. We're very smart.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Okay. Do we have any communications, Madam Clerk?
No, we don't.
All right. Do we have any questions from counselors about the specifics of the ordinance? Counselor Hecht, go there first.
I have a question for the school board, or it's technical in terms of, how many children go to West Parish as an enrollment, number one? Number two, how many teachers and staff are there? And number three, how many onsite parking spots are there?
I'm going to guess at all of those, but they'll be close. About 350 kids go to West Parish School. There are about 75 staff. And what was the third one? How many parking spaces? There's just under 100 parking spaces.
And how long is the queue in terms of cars?
The queue can hold roughly, depending on how close they pack in, at least 50 cars and maybe 58 or 59 before they get out onto Concord Street, although it's on the grounds of the school. People come very early. I've seen cars there as early as Cuadra Pasto, waiting, you know, getting in line to pick up the kids. It's a very smooth operation, and I just, if I may, just expand on when we designed the school and the concerns that we had when we designed the school. If you remember the old school, the buses went all the way around the school, cars went all the way around the schools, kids were walking in front of the buses, behind the buses to get to their parents' cars. One of the main criterias that we set when they designed the school was we wanted to have a safe exit for the kids to be able to get on the bus, walk home, or into their parents' cars without having to cross traffic. So that's why we have a circle for the buses to come up. The buses come up and they circle around. They can pull in and do the turn. The allusion to buses backing up, there are a couple of, there's a small special needs bus that actually will come and it gets in the queue, but it gets in the front of the queue, and it does back up. And that's not, there are staff out there stopping traffic and stopping children to, you know, get in the way when that's happening. But we also, so the queue comes around, they are not allowed to get into the parents' cars unless they are in front of the school. In other words, there's staff out there that monitor them getting picked up, so they can't, the kids are not allowed to cross traffic to go over to get into the queue down, further down. In other words, they've got to pull in in front of the school, and they can accommodate eight or nine cars at a time, and then they pull out. And like I say, that works very well. The problem is capacity. What happens is that people don't want to get in the queue. They come a little late, they'd rather, so they park on Concord Street, they park on Landing Way, they park up on Essex Avenue, and they get out of their car, leave their car, apparently sometimes running, and walk up and take their children as walkers. They say, my child's a walker. And then they walk them down, and then they cross Essex Avenue, they cross Concord Street, and the parking, those cars parking are one of the main problems. But our only way to solve that is to make the queue work better. So to make the queue work better, we need to let them run out on Concord Street and back up towards the fire station. Now, there's still plenty of room for cars to go both ways with cars parked on that side until you get, I don't know, it's about 600 feet, until you get up to that corner, and then the road narrows greatly. But that would accommodate another 20 cars, which is about what we have counted parking, you know, illegally. Now, we don't have any capacity as a school to ticket cars. The principal can suggest and tell people they should get in the queue, but we don't, we cannot enforce that. There are no problems at drop-off, but pickup, there's always going to be people picking up their kids. They may take the bus in the morning, but they go into music lessons in the afternoon, they're going to go, their grandmothers may be picking them up because their parents are working. There's not a solution to the fact that people are going to want to pick up their kids in cars. And the other thing is that we've got to keep in mind is the parking for events and that is a whole separate issue, and we understand that, and we're working on resolutions to that, but that's not part of this. Additional parking is not going to solve the pickup at the end of school, so...
Can I ask a couple more questions? How many kids of the 350 kids take the bus generally or signed up for the bus?
200? We have, yeah, we have these numbers. I don't have them in the back of my head. I used to be able to remember stuff like that.
Sorry.
Those days are gone.
You're a legend.
We have 205 students that take the bus. Now, 56 of them pay the fee, so there was a question about what would it cost to give all...
Before you go there, I'm just doing the math, okay? So we've got 350 kids. We've got 70 staff. We've got 100 parking spots on site. We've got, the bus area, that functions, or does that also queue out in the street?
No, it functions.
That functions, okay. So that's not our issue. So we've got basically 145 kids being dropped off and picked up, right? Just 350 kids total. 205 are bussed, and 145 are picked up and dropped off, and we have a queue of 58 cars.
There are 205 that ride the bus, school choice. The lady mentioned that earlier. There are approximately 43, and by school committee policy, they have to, they have to transport their children to school. Students who are living greater than two miles who have not applied for a bus pass, there were about 57, but we were able to get about 12 of those now to take the bus. Let me also add that there are parents who simply say, I'm not going to put my child on the bus. This is an opportunity for me to spend time with my child, taking him to school, or as Mr. Pope mentioned, they've got after-school activities. There are a number of reasons why parents simply are not interested in placing their children on the bus, whether they have to pay a fee or not. I had mentioned before that where there are no sidewalks, there are about 15 students, and we have offered them free transportation, and about half of them have taken us up on that. There are a number of students with disabilities who parents feel absolutely obligated to drive their children to school as well. So when all is said and done, you're right, there are approximately 205, maybe upwards of 250 out of the 350 that might take the bus on any given day. of 250 out of the 350 that might take the bus on any given day.
But then you say something, "I'm just trying to get the metrics." So we've got a 58-car queue, and we have between 100 and 145 kids, you know, being dropped off and picked up. And if Grandma wants them in the afternoon, it could be more, taking their music lessons, right? So we have about half of the queue, round numbers. We have about 60% of the queue that we need. Is there any way to do a double drive-through where you can solve this problem onsite? Is there any more land available? The question was about a sidewalk that looks great, but I'm just, you know, my background is traffic and development and making all these things work.
And the folks that spoke about short-term versus long-term solutions are absolutely correct. What we're trying to do is alleviate the congestion in the immediate sense for this particular school year. But we've also made overtures to the MSBA, Mass. School Building Authority, to talk about whether or not we could bring back the designers to begin to take a look and examine what might be done. Mr. Pope had mentioned the old building, they were able to circle around and back. I'm in no position to make any real suggestions, but there is space out there. And if, as you're suggesting, in order to widen and lengthen the queue, that we would have to cut back on some of that land, that's something that would need to be looked at. Somebody had mentioned earlier about there being sidewalks on both sides. And is it possible, or is there land adjacent to the school that would allow us to provide a parking area so parents could park their cars, walk, pick up their children, bring them back to the cars, and somehow find some sort of way in which those who are in a live queue moving out, those who've parked to pick up their children, can it be coordinated so they can all leave and at the same time increase our capacity? Again, within that 30-minute, it's a 30-minute window that we're talking about, so it can be a little fast and furious.
So are you talking about simultaneously having a short-term solution? Let me finish. That you feel would be a safer condition while you work to solve the long-term problem, which seems like it needs to be on campus? I mean, to me, it just seems like it, you know?
Yes.
Is that what you're proposing?
When we came to PND, when we came to PND, we had this discussion, and it was determined that we would try this for the rest of the year and see if it had, along with all the other things that we have done for, to alleviate this problem, whether it would have an effect.
And then what has been, what is, where are we logistically in talking to the state and this and that about studying the on-campus solutions, you know, the onsite solutions? Like, how long is that process? Is that a six-month process? Do you have to hire someone to get a study? Do you have to apply, and then it takes two years? I mean, what are you talking about on the ultimate solution side?
Well, the project is not closed out. The West Parish project is not closed out. And the question that we have to MSBA is if we were to bring back the designers to re-look at the traffic flow and parking, would it be reimbursable? Okay. That's the question to MSBA, which we haven't gotten an answer yet. But we're going there tomorrow. I'll ask again. But it still would cost money. I mean, even if we're getting, you know, 50% of it back, it's, and it would, you know, that would be another issue. But, you know.
So all councilors have got their hands up. So are you wrapped up now, Counselor?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Cox, and then Counselor Gilman.
Thank you. Oh, man, where do I start? So this is nothing new, and we had the same problem when you guys used St. Anne's for this same school. So when we had St. Anne's, we bussed to O'Malley, and we had pickup there. Was there any thought about trying to find an off-site place to do that similar thing? And I'm only throwing this out there because I really don't like the idea of making a small, itty-bitty segment of already narrow road and congested road a one-way for 30 minutes a day at random times for early release and for regular schedule, and then not doing anything over the summer. I think it's way too chaotic of an area to even impose that. So I'm just wondering what other things that you guys have thought about? And granted, I did miss the community meeting at the school, so I do apologize for that if this was brought up before.
We have considered, it hasn't been put in place or tested yet, that we would have an off-site pickup spot for school choice kids, which we said there's 43 of. Now, they're not all coming from the same place, you know? So to have an off-site, say, down on the Boulevard at the Little League Field, might work for all the people coming from town, but it wouldn't necessarily be a, from kids coming from Lanesville, it wouldn't, you know, they'd rather just keep driving to the school.
Right.
So we haven't really figured out how that might work. We, you know, we have contacted some people, and they have expressed some interest in that they might consider that if it were available.
Okay. My other thing is, I don't feel like you guys are really taking this enforcement issue seriously. You can't ride a ticket, neither can we, but we know who to call. Like, I think there has to be some level of enforcement applied here from you to the parents, whether it's tickets, whether it's sending letters, you know, saying that there is no pickup during this timeframe, or no arriving earlier. I just, I don't see a lot of pushback from the school regarding the parents. From what I've heard, the parents are ruling this and not the school committee, not the principal, not the staff. So I've had the pleasure of reading at West Parish through the First R program, and man, did I pick a bad afternoon time to read, because I got done right when school was about to release. I had to literally go knock on somebody's window, and I'm like, "Can you back up just a smidge so I can get out?" And then I managed to get out. But, oh, I will not volunteer during that time period again because that was, like, I would have been stuck there for at least 45 minutes after what I talked with the parent. She's like, "Yeah, we're here for 45 minutes before we get our kids." Like, people are lining up that far in advance? So I, she said that--
And that's the issue. Once the queue starts to form, it blocks in most of the parking spaces in the parking lot.
Right. And then if you have 43 school choice, 205 that are taking the bus, where's that other, you literally have 100 parents picking up their kids? But all I'm hearing is that there's an eight-to-nine-person queue. I really just do not think that the one-way, like the lady said, with coming from the firehouse and coming around that corner, is she going to be stuck in that queue? She can't go into oncoming traffic because that's still a two-way section. The only one-way section that you're going to talk about is from the school entrance to 133.
All we would be doing is preventing people from turning off of Essex Avenue down onto Concord Street. People coming from the fire station would just go through. There's plenty of room for, I mean, right now, you've got cars parked on both sides in two-way, you know? So if we can extend the queue down onto Concord Street--
Right, but you said yourself that there is an area where that would soon bottleneck during, or that narrow turn.
I said, the queue works very well once it starts. The fact that people come 45 minutes early is not, you know, it just happens. I mean, I don't--
But that, I mean, to me, that falls into an enforcement issue. Like, if you see somebody coming 45 minutes early, and I know you guys have your hands full with trying to keep toddlers and kids and all that good stuff in order and safe, but I just, I don't, I don't think that we've tried everything that we can try before making a one-way. I'm just, I'm not for it.
What would you suggest?
Off-site busing.
So we're still, questions here? You have any more questions, Counselor Cox?
No.
Thank you.
The math is not adding up.
Thank you. Counselor Gilman?
So not having been at the meetings that were held, I do, I empathize with what I'm hearing from people. I mean, I think, I think that they're bringing up some pretty good thoughts, but I know that a lot of this has been thought through. So I'm wondering if you had considered doing this on a three-month trial from March 1st until the end of June and actually stipulate that in our motion? So for those people that are a little bit concerned for safety--
Excuse me, Counselor, let me just interrupt you.
I should be, I should be addressing the--
Well, no, I'm just going to say that the motion will be amended because the intention was to have it just be from now until the end of the school year--
Okay.
--and then have a reassessment. So that part of it should be--
Okay. So then, so that's already, that's already been discussed? So anyway, okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Counselor Holmgren.
So when, if we pass this ordinance tonight, these two ordinances, it'll take a month to go into effect, and I completely sympathize with everything that you guys have been trying to do. I appreciate it. I am a West Parish parent who, we do elect to bus our child in. We live six-tenths of a mile away from the school. I calculated that recently. And I would really love for us to get some assurance that this will be resolved, and I know that you are working as hard as you can to make sure that that is happening. So I appreciate it. And I want to make, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. If you can have a contractor come and take a look and see if maybe the queuing can be reassessed, how quickly can that be done?
It's dependent on funding. And what we're talking about is having a designer person come and do it. That doesn't, then there's a question of cost.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if we need to buy the neighbor's yard to make it work, and then there's costs involved in that. You know, I don't know what the cost would be. I don't know what the, you know, the funding would come from. We're just hoping to get at least a plan. Then you have something to talk about.
Thank you.
Counselor Nolan, since you're the ward counselor, you're next.
The timeframe, I know that it's going to go in with the SBMA and other things going in it, and we do know that there is design flaws and what's happening. And I've worked with all of you on this, and we've got a lot of hours and a lot of meetings and minutes out there for people to have read on the subject. I know that it's going to take a little bit, and I know that there's some people in the area that are concerned with some of the stuff. Right now, my question would be, I know you're working on that and the design, but what do you think the realistic idea of what the approach would be for the next step without funding? Would that be to actively work on the choice kids with a pickup on both locations would be the next step with funding in mind? Or would you move on to work in the access around the back of the school and open up the lot as a short-time consideration?
The off-site pickup is something that we're actively working on. There's, we're talking to the bus manager and identifying buses that aren't completely full. And, you know, that's problematic because it's potentially completely full. You don't want, having an overcrowded bus is a very dangerous situation as well. And if you, even though, you know, the buses hold 60 kids and only 40 of them on it, but if they're, you know, if this eligible tab pick up 60, then you've got to leave those spaces open. As far as the design goes, we will move forward on that as quickly as we can. But I know you and I have both looked at it. There's not a simple solution that comes to mind. Even if you were to try to extend the queue all the way around the school, you know, then it interferes with the bus circle, and I'm not sure what the solution to that is. So I don't know. I can't, I can't say. We're just, you know, we're just moving forward. We are at, we did not budget for it this year, but as we work on our budget for this year, it has been brought up that we would make busing to, for all students at West Parish because essentially there is no safe path to West Parish School, even if you live, you know, 600 yards down the road on Concord Street. There's no sidewalks. We've talked about sidewalks, we've talked about sidewalks. But right now, all that, all that even on Essex Avenue that exists is up to the cemetery and down to, I can't remember the name of the street, but it's about, you know, what, 300, 400 yards down Essex Avenue towards the railroad tracks. So there's not, that's, those are the only, those houses are the only houses that are safe to walk in that, you know, in that school district.
I'd just like to add, and Mr. Pope had said earlier, that when the queue gets going, the queue works and it moves rather quickly. What we're asking is to expedite that. And if there are, if there's more traffic and more cars coming down from Essex Avenue, while buses are getting in and buses are getting out, that is what creates more congestion. We cannot move the queue any faster than the flow out of the area can take place. And there are long-term solutions that need to be sought. In the short term, this is a pilot program, and we're looking to alleviate as much of the congestion as possible so that the extent to which the queue currently works, which was originally designed for safety, the hope and the expectation in the short term is that it's going to move faster and swifter and more efficiently.
Counselor Memhart hasn't yet to speak. Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you. And thanks to the school committee, and thanks also to the families that have students there and also who live in the neighborhood. It's obviously a difficult, challenging situation. The first thing would seem to me that we cannot allow people to park on Essex Avenue or Route 133 or Concord Street without sidewalks there. That needs to be enforced as a matter of practicality and safety, and certainly on the private roads in the neighborhood, and that we need to step up to that, to owning that part of the problem. With all due respect for the families that have remains interred at Beach Brook Cemetery, when I was at the school and looking out the window from the third floor over the playground installation there at the cemetery, which is 50 feet away from the corner of the school right there, I really have to wonder if we fully explore the opportunity to use Beach Brook Cemetery as a community resource that would be of value to the school facility in a way that augments an interaction between the two. That would seem like a wonderful potential situation on many, many fronts. Several of the residents here mentioned it. I don't know the legal or practical issues there, but I think that to what extent we can, that is a potential solution that would enhance the community. And what we're talking about now is building walls that will not enhance the community of people and families at this school. And we need to, we need to work together so that this is a community of school people. So I'd like to know if there's any exploration of that and what the barriers would be to using Beach Brook Cemetery. Pause lane, you know, again, whether they're dropped off and walked through with a guard or whatever. But again, it's a community resource abutting and adjoining this property. Thank you.
We've been informed that it's against the law. Well, that's the information we're functioning on, that it is not to be encouraged to, for people to pick up their kids by, as a matter of fact, when we built the school and built that playground, one of the requests was that we put a big fence between the cemetery and the school. And, you know, we're just trying to keep people safe and--
And if, again, as we look at all the opportunities, if we could encourage you to please explore why that is and what possibly could be addressed to remedy that and make it a creative solution for everybody involved.
Other councilors, Counselor Harry, you haven't spoken yet.
Thank you. Whatever you, we decide, you can't mandate, you know, if you, the choice students, the parents, you can't mandate that even if you have an off-site parking, that they participate in that. So I think you've done in the ONA meetings, you've sent out letters, you've made suggestions. Clearly, we're putting a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound. The people have no place to-- have no place to park. Counselor Cox mentions Essex Ave. I've been exposed to it. I took the turn on Concord Street one day unbeknownst to anything, and boom, there it was, cars parked on the side of, the right side of Concord Street going down the hill. Wow. There's a major problem. We blew the design. We blew everything. We have to do something. We're looking at a short window of time, as Counselor Holmgren said and others, we have a 30-day grace period. And we're looking at three months. We have to come up with a better solution. But we have to do something to hopefully, this isn't the cure-all. I know all of the roses and their comments are well-received by all of us. But we can't make these cars disappear. So we have to do some, try something. If it doesn't work, and it probably won't work, we'll find flaws and we'll say, boom. But we have to try something before there's a major accident.
So if I can just intercede, we're still on council questions. And so let's just focus on that for this specific, you know, there's a lot of global solutions. We're looking at one specific solution right now. And that's what we're going to be voting on. So any other council questions about the technicalities of this particular proposal? Counselor Cox?
It was brought up earlier that there was a crossing guard that was supposed to be hired for this. So if there's a plan to, if it does get approved tonight, that you get approval to close the road, what's the status of the crossing guard? Have you hired one? Do we need extra ones? Where are they going to be? Are they going to be up at the top of Essex? And I would assume that if this passes, that after the 30-day waiting period, that you will request that a police officer is up there with the crossing guard because there's going to be a lot of heated interactions for a while until people get used to it. So I'm just curious what your plan is with that.
First, I just want to pick up again on the enforcement issue and say that whether it passes or doesn't pass, enforcement is an issue that's going to require more than one agency. It's not just the school department that is capable out on the streets, on a state road on 133 or on Concord Street. We simply don't have the jurisdiction in order to enforce, for example, people who are parking who should be in the live queue. With the 30-day waiting period, we would, of course, advertise and post for a crossing guard. We've had some very preliminary conversations with the Department of Public Works. And for that, those 30 minutes, what can be put in place so that cars see a physical barrier, something which is movable, maneuverable, and safe, that's in place, that would prevent cars from coming from Essex Avenue onto Concord Street again for the 30 minutes. And the crossing guard would be in that area as well. And as the position evolves, my hope and expectation that with a barrier of some sort, that crossing guard is also in a position to help cross students across Essex Avenue where necessary.
Walkers are not supposed to be, they're not supposed to be picked up, right? Or is that they can be picked up or they can walk? Is that correct?
So last year, I said that there's no walkers. Parents.
Go identify yourself for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Talina Emel, the principal at West Parish. Last year, we sent a letter saying that we had only pickup and buses. Parents created their own walker line. And so this year, I did say we had a walker spot. Parents, as the previous parent mentioned, you know, they have to get to different things. They're picking up seven kids. They want to use the playground. So we did add the walker piece. We've since said that walking isn't the best solution because of the traffic situation that's escalated this year. But it's work in progress.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Good. Okay. Then we will close the public hearing and call for the committee report. And before the committee report reports, I will remind counselors, and I'm not going to name names, a lot of this is in your minutes, in the minutes of the committees that hear this. I would really encourage you to read the minutes before we come to the meeting because a lot of questions are answered in those minutes, a lot of the technicalities and stuff like that. So please do that. It would really help all of us. So, committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two motions this evening. Ordinance and Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, quote, "traffic and motor vehicles," end quote, Section 22-267, quote, "one-way streets generally," end quote, by adding, quote, "while school is in session on weekdays, Concord Street from the entrance of West Parish School southwest to Essex Avenue approximately 285 feet from 2:45 p.m. to 3:15 p.m. and early release days from 11:45 a.m. to 12:15 p.m.," end quote. An iso move.
Second. Moved and seconded.
I'd like to make an amendment to this, please.
Yes, please.
So at ordinance administration, we had talked to Chairman Pope and Superintendent Sapphire of bringing this back to ordinance administration before the next school year so we can discuss this, see how it's working, if it needs to be tweaked, or if we've come with a solution. So I would like to make an amendment to bring this back. I'm not sure what would work for the school committee and the superintendent as a date. All right, so we can do it in August, middle of August?
No, right after the school year.
No, right after the school year.
So he's talking about when we would end the.
So in the first meeting at the end of June, or the first meeting in the July, because the school year ends at the end of June. So the first meeting, ordinance and administration in July, please.
Right. So one other option is to say that these two ordinance changes are for a period from enactment until June 30th. Yes, Counselor Gilman?
I'm not amending. I'm just making a suggestion. I would suggest that we start on March 5th and we do it till the end of the school year in terms of amending the motion because March 5th gives us enough time to get the word out there that these changes are going to happen, rather than it just starting immediately through the end of the school year.
Well, it starts in 30 days. So we have 30 days. These don't go into effect for 30 days.
That's true.
So that's when it will be effective, 30 days from when we pass this. And it will be, and it will be effective until June 30th. Counselor Cox?
I only suggest that the meeting happens as soon as the school year is over so we don't have a lapse in memory and so that we have a 30-day window on the other side if something were to change. I think it has to happen as soon as the school year is over. That's all I'm asking for.
Agreed. Yes, so the first week in July, this would come back to ordinance administration for review. But the motion on the ordinance should say that this ordinance is effective, well, whenever and through June 30, 2018.
What's the date, Joanne, for 31 days?
The last, that's the last day. We have plenty of time. So sometime in June. So can we, as a motion to this, can we add that this, the ordinance is effective until June 30, 2018, through June 30, 2018? That's the motion? We'll have a second? Motion moved and seconded.
I'm glad this amendment was collaborative. Thank you, everybody.
We all knew what you meant.
I know. There's a lot of movement.
Okay, so now, so the motion has been amended. And on the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't need a roll call on that, right? Okay.
Um, you got a call for the noes?
Yeah. All those, no, this is for the amendment, amending Steve's motion to have it end the 30th of June, 2018, the ordinance. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, now, back to the motion.
Discussion on the main motion.
Yes.
So I'm going to support this tonight. And the reasons are basically what everybody said here tonight, safety of the children. If we don't have something set up for, we all realize this is a temporary fix. And until a solid solution is, we come up with a solid solution, there's nothing else. We've talked about this at O&amp;A. And busing children to different parts of the city as drop-off and pickup. So, you know, safety, rather than having your kids walk up to 133 still or crossing Concord Street with two-way traffic, I think this is the safest remedy at the moment until we can figure out the right one. And as for the cemetery, there's a lot of veterans buried in that cemetery. And if one of my relatives or one of my family members was buried in that cemetery, I would be pretty PO'd having it used as a parking drop-off or pickup. And not only that, it just opens the doors for other parts of the city that we have restricted use for. So if we start disregarding our use for these cemeteries and other places that are strictly used for purposes, we're just going to be opening a Pandora's Box for things down the road. So I will support both of these motions this evening.
Counselor Nolan. I spent a lot of time on this issue, a lot of mornings and afternoons, watching the traffic flow, watching the queue, trying to get a feel for what actually goes on, how many people come and go. The immediate choice that we have right now is to try to regulate the traffic coming from Essex Avenue onto Concord Street to make it so we can have live parking only on Concord Street heading towards Essex Avenue to get in there. Then the long-term solution is fixing something that doesn't work. The parking lot doesn't work. The plan of the school doesn't work. To make sure this doesn't happen at other schools, the school committee is well aware of all of this. They're working on it pretty hard. We have to find from the safety point right now for a temporary fix. And the most dangerous situation that I find going down there is coming from Essex Avenue, going around the corner by Wendy's House, and coming to around the blind corner, which she's offered also the help at many different times with the city with some good ideas and suggestions. It's blind. And so you have cars waiting to turn into West Parish School going left, but they're being held up because of people in the queue and they can't get in there. And they just stay there on the right-hand side of the road. And that backs up to Essex Avenue. So for the short-term solution, I believe the only thing that we can do, working with the police department, the DPW, the fire department, and all the other departments that we have talked to on this, is try this for at least a three months, hopefully find a long-term solution with the school department, with doing something better in the schoolyard. But for safety and for the fastest solution, I think this is the only thing we can do right now. And I will be supporting this.
I will also be supporting these measures this evening. This has been a very difficult situation for quite some time. I sympathize with the parents and the neighbors who spoke. And I appreciate the work that's been done by Counselor Nolan, Counselor Lundberg, and by the school administration. I realize that this is absolutely not a permanent solution. And I hope that we can come to a resolution as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Cox?
While I'm really not in favor of this, for numerous reasons, I will support it for this short-term period, for the trial effort. But this will not be voted for by me again in July when it's brought back forward. So I hope that there's a lot of thought process. And I'm still kind of surprised that it took mid-February of the school year to realize that there was a problem and to come up with this, in my opinion, this poor of a solution to it. As far as, you know, what we did when West Parish was downtown, we did have mandatory pickup at O'Malley. So it can be done. Off-site locations can be done. And we proved that with the use of St. Anne's. So I look forward to hearing better solutions in July.
Thank you, Counselor. Any others? Counselor Hecht?
Thank you. It's, there's four and a half months between now and July 1. So I, for one, would be very happy to meet anyone up at the site to see if I could help and understand, you know, what some of our options might be. And I just, I don't want to get here July 1 and go, well, you know, I mean, I want the next four, that must be very productive in terms of solutions, alternatives. Also, it could be sketch plans from designers. It doesn't have to be full-blown, you know, $20,000. It can be like pencils and paper, you know, to kind of rough it out. I think that's really what we have to do, is try and figure that kind of stuff out. And I'd be glad to help. And I will be in support of this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just to set the record straight, this problem did not just arise in the last month or so. We've been working, Counselor Nolan came to me back in September. We've had several meetings at the school. We have explored many of the items that were issued, that were discussed tonight. And I think everyone's correct. This is a, really a stopgap measure. There's got to be a better solution. But we would like to try this for the temporary period. Regarding, I did want to make one comment about enforcement because I know there was a lot of comments about that, people parking on Essex Avenue, people parking on Landing and so forth. During our discussions, Counselor Nolan and I, and this is a city issue, not a school issue, about enforcement. And we had thought that it would be best if we could get this traffic solution in place first and then do the enforcement. Because if we're going to tell the people on Essex Avenue, which we will tell them as soon as we get this in place, you can't park here anymore, get moving, we had to have an alternative for them. Now that we're going to have an alternative, the enforcement will follow. And then we've discussed this with the police department, and we will make that a part of this temporary trial. So with that, I will also support it. Anybody else want to comment on? We have two motions. And so let's do the, Counselor Nolan.
And on the enforcement, the enforcement will include Landing Road as being a private property and no parking. So that's one thing that will be looked at as well. And you guys can feel free to talk to me about the signage on that.
Counselor Gilman?
So I echo everything everyone has said, but I do want to add one more thought. When I heard about the people that are leaving their cars on and then running in to pick up their kids, I'd like to make sure we're enforcing our no idling policy. Not only is that environmentally accurate, but it just, it's just not, it's not what we want to be doing. So.
Sure. Okay. Anyone else on the first motion? So it's a roll call? Because it is, no? Okay, then it's not. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Great. Next motion.
Last motion for this is, ordinance administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-145, stopping, standing, and parking, by adding quotations, "live parking, drivers to remain with their vehicles for the purpose of picking up students at West Parish School will be permitted on the north side of Concord Street from the entrance of West Parish School 444 feet in an elderly direction toward the fire station during the same hours as described in Section 22-267," end quote. An iso move. Same amendment, because this will be coincident with the other in terms of expiring on June 30, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion on this one? This goes, and all of us in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Opposed? All right. All right. Good work, guys. Pardon me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, now the amended motion. I'm sorry, thank you, Jen, all those in favor, say aye. Is it aye or opposed? Okay. Now we are done with that. Thank you, that was good work. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is the update of the Fisheries Commission by City Council Representative, Councilor Scott Memhard.
Councilor Memhard, I know that you've been preparing for this...
I want to keep you all for at least 45 minutes of close attention to this, but actually, it really amounts to an invitation by Economic Development Director Salda Stefano, and the mayor, and Mark Ring, who's the chair of our Fisheries Commission, to please appreciate the efforts that the Gloucester Fisheries Commission is doing, both in our Gloucester Fresh marketing initiative, and then even more importantly, this year's upcoming Gloucester Fresh Pavilion at the Seafood Show Expo North America, which is at the Boston Convention and Exhibition Center. We are all, as city councilors and as representatives of Gloucester, invited to attend that show, to help staff the booth that the city maintains for those three days, and to explore and enjoy all the good food and the exhibits and the industrial information about the seafood industry. The mayor's office does specifically request, however, that if we request a pass through her office and through Mr. Stefano, that we please attend and use it, they are in limited number. We have a corner booth, the city's been very enterprising in organizing a number of different grant resources to help underwrite our booth and the advertising associated with the Gloucester Fresh program. The 99 Restaurants, for your information, continue to highlight Gloucester Haddock, which they are continuing, even though Mazetta is no longer processing up at Blackburn. There will be billboards, there will be some spots on 1049 promoting Mark Ring and Paul Vitale and Al Katon, how we say his name? Katon? But the mayor's putting a lot of work into this, the Fisheries Commission's putting a lot of work into this, I have, I had to pry this packet that you all have out of the mayor's office, so we each would have a copy of it, so this is for you to study, and if you're interested in attending, please contact the mayor's office or Salda Stefano and join us for the seafood show, the shrimp is particularly good, at Contessa Shrimp Booth. So, the seafood show is just after Lent in March, so it's Sunday, March 11th, Monday, March 12th, and Tuesday, March 13th. The mayor has a special pavilion presentation on the Monday, which we are invited to if we make a reservation, where it's a VIP presentation, reception, and then they will be having representative seafood buyers from all over the world, including a contingent from Scotland, visiting here in Gloucester on the following day, on Wednesday, the 14th, so they're going to be doing an extensive field trip to Gloucester immediately after the seafood show winds up. This is a big deal, Gloucester has a big presence that's appropriate for our proud tradition in the seafood industry, and if we can participate as emissaries of Gloucester and to help learn about it and support these efforts, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Memhard, that was great.
Thank you.
Yes, sure.
So, I attended the seafood show last year. So, I attended a seafood show last year, and I thought the marketing was amazing, we're the only municipality represented there, and I've been working with Sal, had a two-hour meeting with Sal, Monday morning, 5:45, I was at the seafood auction on Monday, met with Gloucester's, find a seafood, and went through an auction process, and asked the, and I met with Mark Ring as well, of how do we get more business for Gloucester? How do we sell more fish? How do we sell more lobster? How do we get names on contracts? So, my goal is to line up the prospects, which are colleges and universities who want seafood, they can, they can buy truck, they can buy boatloads of fish from Iceland that are frozen and salted, and a lot of these places cannot have in hospitals the salted fish, for obvious reasons, so there are niche markets that we can sell to. My point is that I would like everyone's attitude to be, how can we get signatures on contracts? It can be a good time, the trade shows I've attended have always been more like heat-seeking missiles of how do we sell stuff? So, please keep in mind, this is about, yes, PR, there's tons of PR, we got billboards, we got this, we got a booth, we're giving away food, the mayor's doing her thing, the marketing is awesome, it's focused on the prospects so that we can get business to come to Gloucester. So, if anyone would be more interested in hearing about that, if you're going to attend the show, I'll be happy to put you to work selling, because that's really what we need to do. That was my only comment, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next order of business? Just the council's requests and any comments, we'll start with Councilor Holmgren.
I want to thank Chris Sicaronza and James Pope, who responded very quickly to my request to implement an 800 number for people to call in, that is not quite finished yet, but they are working on it, and so I want to thank them for that, and also, on February 14th, I wanted to mention that at City Hall, there is going to be an event called One Billion Rising at 3:00 p.m., and it is presented by the Gloucester Coalition for the Prevention of Domestic Abuse, Strong Men Don't Bully, HAWK, the YWCA North Shore Rape Crisis Center in the City of Gloucester, and it's going to be featuring women's rights activists, Megan Wolfe, Gloucester recording artist Laura Crook, and I hope to see you all there, thank you.
I hope that you're all aware, and it's on your calendars, but this Thursday at 6:30 at the Sawyer Free Library downstairs in the friend room, we will be having a community discussion about the proposed new summer beach zone parking restrictions, which will be more extensive tow-away zones for cars that aren't labeled with resident stickers. I've had some interesting discussions with people, including this morning on, was it Rio Drive or Cabo Drive, some people think this is going to be great, they just wish the police were doing a better job of enforcement, other people, however, object to this, they see it as cutting into their revenue stream to rent out parking spaces in their front yards, so, I mean, there's always an enterprise in Gloucester point of view on things, that's not necessarily a legal use in a residential zone, but, so, not everybody's in favor of this tightening of the restrictions, so your presence would be very appreciated.
Yes, and thank you for hosting that. Councilor Nolan? Jen, would you turn off your mic? Councilor Nolan? Nothing? Councilor Cox?
I know I'm going way far out here with the schedule, but if everybody could please pencil in.
Greasy pole.
Pride stride.
Okay, not that far.
Pride stride.
April 29th for Pride stride, the walk kicks off at noon, I know how everybody's dance card fills up rather fast, but I'm happy to say that I'm president again this year, so I would really love to have more city councilors there. 29th, it's always the last Sunday of April. Cape and Animal Aid Fall is this Saturday night, there are very limited tickets left, so if anybody would like to attend and show their support for that, it is on the 17th, it is over the bridge, so if anybody wants any more information on that, please contact Cape and Animal Aid. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Councilor Cox. Councilor LeBlanc?
I don't have anything to say tonight about any requests of the mayor, but I would like to mention Damon Cummings this evening, there were two women in the audience, and before they could leave the auditorium, they both left their purses here, and he chased them out the door and made sure that they got their purses, so I'm pretty sure Damon takes a peek at these minutes, so, thank you, Damon.
Good work. Councilor Hecht?
On Friday, I'm meeting at 8:30 a.m. with a combination of the Chamber of Commerce, with the combination of Chamber of Commerce and Discover Gloucester. Right now, I'm on the tourism liaison to the Tourism Commission, and Tourism Commission's sort of kaputts right now, and I'm really trying to figure it out in terms of, you know, how do we enhance what we have here? After a long discussion with Ken Reel today, which will be continued, they're working, I mean, I'm not sure that, you know, we have to work on our July 15th demand for services here, everyone's rocking and rolling, they're really working on the shoulder season, and they're working on the winter season, so it's going to be very interesting to see both how these two organizations interact, and also, the Tourism Commission, their primary function is to open the Stageford Park tourism thing, so, how this all plays out with the Tourism Commission being sort of not happening right now, I'm going to try and get in the middle of that and try and figure out how to keep things moving.
Thank you. Councilor Gilman?
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to just apologize to everyone, because I've been having technical problems for the last three weeks between my desktop and now my email, so, thank you. No. I wish. I did want to mention, just a correction on the minutes of, not the minutes, but on something that Attorney Pace had brought up at the January 23 meeting, and I told him I was going to bring this up at the end, he stated that the regulations become effective on either six months...
Just clarify, this is about the recreational marijuana?
This is about the recreational marijuana, yes, so he stated at that meeting that the regulation became effective either six months after the day that the regulations are approved, which is anticipated March 15, 2018, or the day of our moratorium, and then he said whichever is earlier. So, that would have meant that it would have, it could have been as early as September 15, 2018, and the statute actually reads whichever is later, so that means our moratorium, which we approved, to December 30 is the correct date, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, and going forward, we should just make sure that we have that date correct, so, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Herrera?
Sure, thank you. Just want to thank the DPW for taking on patching the potholes, but I want to ask the administration to focus on the private roads around the city that are, were in good shape, but because of plowing, are going to be probably deemed unreparable, and I would consider that unreparable because of neglect of the administration to patch these potholes. So, there's roads all over the city that are unsafe for emergency vehicles, for the people to passage on, and again, I consider this, again, unresponsible of the administration because these roads have not been patched. I want to ask the administration, I understand we have money in the budget to revamp this dais and eliminate whatever this thing is, I'd like to see that move ahead. The, I want to thank the Mike Hale and the fire department for repairing the Magnolia Fire Station door, which failed and was out of service for many days, but I also want to ask the administration and the fire department to institute an inspection process by a qualified person that's qualified to inspect overhead doors, because the failure of an overhead door in a fire department, fire station is, again, uncalled for. Also with that, we've talked about the CERT program, and Councilor Cox and I, who are member of that program, how important that is, that we need to move that forward. This morning on WBZ Radio, they reported that the National Academy of Science reported that the rising tides will continue indefinitely due to the melting polar cap, and this ties into the January 4 flooding of the Gloucester High School parking lot, where 73 people lost their cars. I think we, as a city, really need to look good and hard at where we have properties in these flood zones, and where we're going to relocate those entities and assets that are in the flood zone, where we're going to put them, I think we can't delay that process any further, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Herrera. So, I have nothing further for us tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.